Then it's on the agenda, I can do that.
Oh, come on, just open up.
Alright, once you get up, you should be able to look at the minutes.
Well, I'm waiting for it to.
To load?
It says processing. Alright. I got it.
I gotta get up too, hold on. Becky said there wasn't much to them, so.
You gotta turn it off?
Yeah, she sent it to me.
It looks like it's, uh.
She sent it to me. Hey there.
Hi.
Hi. You sent it to me?
Yes, I did.
Okay, I've, when?
Hmm. Probably. Three oh five P M.
Okay, are this the minute?
Old business.
She, she usually has more than this, that's what I'm asking.
Well, here's the thing, though, I mean, what we did was, we discussed it, which is fine. We, the old business was, we talked about the reform, no, it's fine, we, we did a final review of the major subdivision.
Alright, we got the same thing, okay.
Yep, we talked about the R A five landowner meetings, and we talked about the P Z vacancies.
Okay.
So I'm good, you got time?
You will?
Nope.
You wanna look at mine?
There's none.
No, it sounds, oh, here we go.
Okay, most definitely for the minutes.
Okay.
Alright.
And, um, you're second?
Are you gonna second it?
Okay.
Okay, okay, good, okay. So let's go to old business. Um, I wanna just take us out of order, just for a second. We did the R A five landowner meeting, which you guys were out, and Rhonda, I have a favor to ask of you.
Sure.
You, will you get in touch with, what is Colonel Bearfit's first name?
Bob, or Robert.
Okay, Robert, okay, so will you, can you get up with him?
Sure.
Okay, if you'll do him, then what I'm gonna do is, I will talk, um, to Steve Martin, you own him, okay?
I don't know him.
He's, he's, he was on planning and zoning for like ten years, he's a really good guy. He's got about a hundred, about a hundred acres.
He's right down here in Hoffman Room.
Down Hoffman, right on the left-hand side. Um, and then I will also talk to, um, Mike Wilson. And is there anybody else that's got a big parcel that you can think of? Not, I mean, Wilson's both have solar farms on there, so I can't, you know, I can't imagine, and they're under, those things are in a contract for like twenty years.
Right.
So they're not going anywhere, okay. Um, I'm trying to think, if you think of anybody else, and you wanna talk to them, or send them to me, or something, I just wanna be sure that we cover as many big landowners as we can, so that nobody, and if, when we go to public hearing on this, everybody's gonna get a registered letter. But it's a lot of registered letters. But I would rather that the big landowners not get, you know, surprised, so to speak. Okay, I would appreciate it.
Mark Braden, you got it, Mary?
Pardon?
Is what, Mark Braden, you just bought some new land, what, how much did he buy, did he buy a large park or was it small?
You know what, I'm gonna talk to him anyway. Well, he bought the acreage down Richmond, adjacent to the general store, that's Village Business District. I'll find out.
I know Mark well, too, he's, uh, he's up to here.
The doctor?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. He did my mother-in-law's hit.
I mean.
Ha, yeah.
He's still, he's still working, isn't he?
Wait.
Oh, Mark's gonna work until he's out of caution.
Yeah, I, I'm, I'm, I hope you're not right, but kind of I'm with you on that one.
Yeah.
Alright, okay, so the next landowner meeting is the twenty-seventh. Um, it'll be the same way as, as the last one was, and Rhonda, if you wanna send a text out on your list, that'd be great. I think what John Stone said, the fact that we didn't have a lot of people is indicative that, you know, at least the people down in Jackson Springs, there's just not a lot of opposition.
I thought it was pretty positive.
Yeah, so that's, yeah, that, that works for me. What I think we'll do is, after we do the one on the twenty-seventh, in October, um, we'll make a recommendation, talk about it, you know, yes or no, and send it to the council. If it's a no recommendation, there's nothing to do. If it's a yes recommendation, then we send it to the council. And remember that to make the change is very simple. We just go in to the U D O. The big blue sleeping pill, okay? And you just eliminate R A. It's just, because the uses in the R A and the R A five are exactly the same, there is no difference, okay? Alright, so, now, let's go to.
What, what about the, um, those that don't meet R A five, that were grandfathering?
They would be grandfathered, they would simply be grandfathered.
There, so there's nothing in writing that has to be done?
Well, I'll ask Lisa that question. I don't believe so, um, but I'll ask her that question. Okay, and I need to back up a second, forgive my poor social skills. This is your replacement, Al Taylor.
Hey, Al, you wanna sit here?
No, I'm good.
No, not yet.
I'm still trying to log in.
No. Are you still not in?
No, I'm in, I'm kidding.
Okay, okay, so, Al's gonna play, I'm gonna ask, um, those, Tom to get appointed for November.
Al.
Al, yeah, you're already done, I'm gonna ask Al. You could be Steve.
Yeah, that's right.
So, I'm gonna ask, um, the council to appoint Al to your spot, beginning in November, which means you gotta gut it out for October.
No, you've already told me this was my last one.
He already made plans to go on vacation.
I'm going to Italy.
When are you going?
November.
Perfect. Perfect, okay.
Mary, how long, how long do we know, do we know how long we're being appointed for?
You're appointed for three years.
Oh, okay.
Yep. We should've gotten a letter from the village.
Nope.
Well, hold on. Okay, I'll ask Lisa about that too, 'cause you should've gotten a appointment letter, and that, okay, that, hang on a second, I'll put that under.
Thank you, Al.
You're welcome, sir.
No, I've been here six years, I just, for this time.
Yeah, that's a good, good, good time.
Been with Mary six years.
And there's a problem with that, why?
I just.
Just to, just make a mention of that.
No, the last person was one of my favorite people.
Okay, and then, um, Neil Ty will take the vacant E T J spot, and that has to be appointed by the county commissioners, it'll be in their consensus agenda, but they probably will not. I don't know if they'll do it in October, it'll either be October, November.
But it's already been submitted to them?
No, uh, it will be, it will be, yeah.
Alright.
Okay, and then we'll be back up to full strength, right? Yeah, okay, good. Okay, so, let's go to the beast. The re-formatted table.
Okay.
A beast, I call it. Alright. Um, so it kicked my butt for several hours, and then I kinda got the hang of it a little bit. Um, you can tell that we got rid of all the colors and all that kinda stuff. I liked what you said about Aberdeen's having, they have kind of a yellow line across the top, so it's easy to see where you are. Um, and then I just put a little blue spacer bar.
The only thing is you have to change the color, is that it?
Why?
Cause they're all y- yellow right now.
Yeah, but you can read it.
Well, that's just a spacer.
That's a highlight.
Yeah, that's just so, so you go, oh, that's, that's a, designates a different set of, a different set of uses.
Oh, no, but that's how they have it, they have the color banner for, different colors for each section. Like residential is one color, and when you start, the retail is another color.
Yeah, but you can read it.
I understand, but that's how they're.
Who?
That's how Aberdeen did it.
Oh, Aberdeen, yeah, that's a.
We can change that, I don't, it's something.
Right now, they're all the same color, so, I think that, I mean, personally, I think that different colors kind of, oh, the yellow is this, and the,
Well, what I, what I did, what I did was, I put a yellow, cause there are a lot, there are a lot of categories, um, I put the yellow on the, the highlighter for, um, residential uses, and then used it again for retail and commercial uses, and that's about as far as I got.
Right.
Okay, well, but I, but, so you did like my, uh.
I think your format was fine, yeah. Um.
Does it seems like the other ones are kind of the same?
What, what do you mean?
The retail, the retail kind of follow my.
Oh, yeah, that's what I did, yeah, that's exactly what I did, yeah.
But I'm happy to, to.
I told you, your format was good.
Why is there, why are there two retail and commercial uses?
Um, because if you look at it as a document, it's, it's easy to go, now what category am I in, I can take those out.
No, I mean, there are two of them.
He's just asking why is it retail and commercial, and they seem to be like the same there.
No.
Is that what you're saying?
You see, yeah, here's one here, and then there's another one.
Right. Because as I was, if you scroll down, and you lose the top, the top, the, the, the first line, the first yellow line, you'll know what, what section you're still in.
No, I, I.
Which I can completely take out, I do think we need to have the zoning part in there more than once, cause otherwise you forget what zoning category you're in. So I can take that out, that's not a big deal.
Yeah, I agree with Tom on that, that is kinda, why do you?
Oh, you got it three times.
Oh, I've probably got it more than that.
I only have three.
Okay, so I can take that out, that's not a problem, but I do think we need to.
Okay, so let me ask you something.
Okay.
Is there, uh, is it gonna be like page one, page two, or there won't be any?
I don't know, I'm not that far.
No, what I'm saying is that, let's say, you start with first page, the residential, okay?
Okay.
Then you go to the second page, and then you have repeated the, like you said, the designations, and at the top of the page, you have whatever it is. So if it spills over to another page,
Uh huh.
then you repeat that band, so you know you are.
That's why I put it in.
Okay.
Because, see, when you put it online, it's gonna be one big document.
Why?
Okay?
But if you print it.
Yeah, that's a good point.
But then.
Then it, then it shows up.
I mean, you're looking at page, and it's like.
Then it, then it shows up, right, I understand.
So I would say.
I've never tried to print it.
I would say like page, yes.
Isn't that what you have right there?
Yeah, but I had printed.
Oh, who printed it?
Well, the table's not here.
Oh, it's not there, oh, by no doubt.
Table, table costs extra.
Oh, cool.
Now, okay, we can, we can, I think, work with that part as we get a little further down, I did get through all of, Theresa did the residential, I got through all of the retail, okay?
What's left? Everything.
Um, well, not everything, not everything else, but it's.
Everything else? Alright, so, Tom, you were gonna tell me which ones you were doing, so that I could assist, but you never told me.
Well, I totally forgot.
Mary, you want some help?
Uh, actually, no, I think I'm gonna do it, and then it's easier for us to go through it as a group.
Alright.
Okay, that, that just, that works easier for me, um.
Okay, now, the, this, the other thing is question.
Uh huh.
Uh, you're going to have, as I recall from the Aberdeen, they would have under the R S twenty or thirty, whatever, you would say A A A, or?
I didn't do it exactly like Aberdeen.
No, I know, but the, you can do it differently, but you, that would tell you that it's, it's applicable to.
Okay, that's what we're gonna talk about tonight, yeah, that's what, that's what we're going back through tonight, just to be sure, um, and it should be pretty straightforward. The rest of this will go a lot faster, because we have like, no manufacturing uses, no industrial uses, stuff like that, and we can just take it out, okay?
Mm-hmm.
Um, hang on a second. I told you, it wasn't gonna be very sexy tonight, so. Alright. Let me just get this one up here. Okay, so if I go across, and I look at, um, hold on, let me get the right thing, hang on.
Well, you can just say it's in progress, and that's it.
Well, it is in progress, but I wanna be sure I got the right table. I have a lot of copies of that thing. I want us to go through and just kinda mark in the yeses and the nos, based on the last run we did at the old table. Okay? So, I'm looking at the old table, single-family detached, um, is allowable, obviously, R S twenty, thirty, forty, R A, R A five, um, R, R E, R F two hundred, E U, and PUD. Now, we're also gonna have to decide whether we want, um, when we set the conditional zoning district up, we need to decide what uses we wanna put in that zoning district. And I think probably.
For which one?
Well, the conditional use district.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah.
Did you add R A five to yours? Because it's.
Uh, you know what, that's a good point, I don't know if I did or not. And the answer to that question is, let me just fix that. I did now.
Okay.
That's good, that's good, you did that.
Well, and then if, um, everything is agreed to, by the landowners, then we'll just take out R A?
R A will just go away, if it's agreed to by the council.
Right.
Okay, thanks for bringing that up, let me save that bad boy. Okay. Single-family detached is allowable in R M, and a PUD. Single-family manufactured home is allowed in R A, and what I did there was I just put in the, the statute that defines it, so that we got rid of that long, lengthy definition. Accessory dwellings are allowed, R S twenty, thirty, forty, R A, R A five, R E, R D, R F two hundred, E U, and in a PUD.
Okay, we're not two family.
Which one is?
Double and duplex, or duplex.
Which one is five, you have an R A and R E, is that R D, which one is that?
R E is rural state. R D is recreational district.
Okay, so which one would, uh, be the five?
I just inserted it.
You don't have it.
You don't have it, I just inserted it, yeah, I totally missed that.
Okay.
Okay, um, duplexes, and I think, how did we show that on the other one? Uh, two-family, doubler duplex is gonna be allowable in R M, residential multifamily, and in a PUD. Okay?
Yep.
And accessory dwellings, R S twenty, thirty, forty, R A, R A five, R E, R D, R F two hundred, E U, and PUD. Um, I'm wondering, you know, Joe always brought up that we didn't, we never had, we never allowed accessory buildings in Village Business District.
Right.
And in some ways, I mean, why wouldn't you allow them?
You mean, for storage?
Yeah.
You'd have to, well.
Why, why would you not allow them?
Doesn't he have that already in the back?
Hmm. Accessory buildings are not allowed in V B.
That doesn't make sense, honestly.
It does make sense to me.
Well, I don't know, I'm, I'm thinking about, uh, other business districts, and thinking if they actually have accessory buildings.
I mean, if you had accessory building for storage, and it matched the, you know, the color and that kinda stuff with your, your main building, and you screened it, I mean, why wouldn't you be able to have it?
What if you had multiple ones?
Well, you could always make it conditional, a conditional zoning.
Mm-hmm.
I just, I don't know, I'm, I'm kinda thinking that, that they should be allowed to have some kind of an accessory building. Theresa, what do you think?
I think so too. That, uh, okay, if something is not there, forget that table, in here. If it's, is it addressed at all?
Well, it's not, it doesn't list accessory buildings for Village Business District, it never has. And I've always kinda wondered why.
Okay, I think that what I'm trying, what's going through my head is, if it's not there, does that mean that it's not allowed?
Yes. Correct, if you talk about accessory buildings, and it doesn't list Village Business District as a district that's allowed to have them, then yes, I would say it means that they're not allowed.
I, I think they should be there, I mean, how, where would you be storing these?
Well, that's.
Well, in the primary building.
Yeah.
In the business district.
Well, you need to store a lawnmower.
There you go.
Well, I'm serious, what if you had a.
No, it makes a lot of sense.
And it had to store a lawnmower, you don't, I don't want them storing a lawnmower in the store.
Okay.
Well, I'm just saying, I mean, I think that's.
Or even in the back with the food, or something like that, whatever.
We put it in the freezer.
This is serious business now, Tom, okay?
I don't care.
We don't, much are, uh.
I'm, I think we should.
No, I think that it should be there.
I'm gonna put it in there, and I'll just put it in, in red, so I know that we just did it. Let me go red. Okay, alright, cool. Okay, now, if we go to multifamily.
Right.
Let me run through the categories, multifamily, three or more dwelling units, obviously, is only gonna be R M and in a PUD. Um, same thing with a condo, alright? Retirement housing services, only Village Business District and a PUD. Congregate or assisted living services, only in Village Business District or a PUD. Continuing care retirement center, only in a PUD. Okay?
Yep.
And when I looked at this today, you know, I don't know what Satman's gonna do with this property down Foxfire Road, but a continuing care retirement center is like a Bellmead, okay? It's like, you can go in at whatever level you want, and then you just stay there till, you know, you pass on. Um, that would be a very good use for that property.
It would?
It's a hundred and fifteen acres, it'd be great.
Yep.
Close to, close to the village center.
Yep.
Yeah, yeah.
That would be good.
I just was thinking, you know, and I got, and they decide they wanna do horse farms and patio farm, patio houses and stuff like that, that's fine, but a well-done center, like a Bellmead or something, that would be, that'd be a great use for that property.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, well, I just wanted to bring that up, cause I might have to talk to Lydia about that. Okay, um.
I'll probably put in a deposit for a room.
Well, but you know what, we've had a lot of people move out of Foxfire.
Sure.
Who would have stayed, had we had that kind of a.
Absolutely.
Had we had something like that, so. Okay, um, and then we have bed and breakfast home in a private, bed and breakfast home in a private building, hang on a second.
Well, uh.
Isn't that.
The way it was in the other one, it said private home, or a private building, both of them.
Well, what I did.
Meaning that it's either a home, or some kind of a building.
Right, I just made it, I just put it all in one line.
Okay.
Is what I did.
Without the slash, is that what you're saying?
Uh huh.
There should be, private home slash building, cause that's why I had it.
Where, where do you have that?
That's what it says, bed and breakfast.
Yeah, but I'm asking whether you changed it or not.
Oh, gotcha. I don't remember.
I'm, right now, you have it as private home slash building, is that what's I'm, what I'm asking?
Is that how you had it?
I think so.
Okay, well, then that's what we got.
Alright.
Yeah.
Alright.
Okay.
So when it's a private home, does that apply to all of the residential areas, or just, uh, certain, uh?
Well, bed and breakfast home is applicable to R S twenty, thirty, forty, R M, R A, R A five, um, R E, it's not applicable to residential, to recreational district, it's applicable to R F two hundred, it's applicable to equestrian, and it would be applicable in a PUD.
Alright, I've got some questions for you.
Fire away.
Alright, uh, we've been going through residential usage.
Correct.
Hotel motel is not residential.
Well.
And then, and then if you go below that, then you have auto sales, car dealership, motorcycle, that's not residential, that's, should all be under retail and commercial.
Hang on a second.
That is not residential. It's under retail source of service. If you look at the, kinda.
Oh, no, I, I see it, I see it, but I'm talking, I'm looking at the heading.
Oh, okay.
Oh, wait a minute, I accidentally deleted it, hang on.
We're trying to turn it.
Hang on, hang on, hang on. Done. I changed it, thank you.
Good.
I changed it. Okay, um, so, I looked at, um, hang on one second here, where is that?
And all of this goes into Village Business District, except?
Breakfast and bed and breakfast in would be allowable in the Village Business District, cause we, remember we talked about.
That's also allowable in residential, isn't it?
No, bed and breakfast home, private building or a home, is allowed in residential.
Got it, okay.
Okay. Um, hotel motel, tourist home or tourist court, I just made that to read hotel or motel, because I didn't know what a tourist home or a tourist court was. So I looked it up, it was very popular from the nineteen thirties to the nineteen sixties. I thought, need upgrade, so I just took that out, because really, what it, it's just kind of a shack, sort of, people, you know what I'm talking about? Okay, well, I looked it up, and I went, yeah, I don't, if you look at it, I don't think, I think hotel or motel is a much better description.
I think so.
Yeah, it's, and, popular from the nineteen thirties to the nineteen sixties, I went, okay, we're done with that. Okay, now, in retail sales, um, and commercial uses, I took the old table, and most of this stuff is only allowable in Village Business District, so.
I think putting in a battery charging station was a good idea.
Wasn't that brilliant?
That was really good.
Thank you, thank you, yeah. I took out, and I took out some things too, like, a photography store, or a, a place that develops pictures, really? I mean, like, who does that?
Well, do you have a drugstore?
Yeah, well, maybe, yeah, yeah, they still will, but, it, so I just got rid of some of that stuff. Um, let me just run through here. Now, a battery charging station, too, obviously, you would allow someone to have that at the house, but we're talking about like, if someone set up a group of battery charging stations.
Well, if somebody, if somebody puts in a gas station, there's a good chance they're gonna be putting in battery charging.
Uh, yeah, I would think so too, yeah, I would think so too. So following the.
Or if you have hotel motel, they might be putting in charging stations.
Oh, yeah, yeah, that's a really good, yeah, yeah, that's a really good point, that's a really good point. Okay, so, in retail sales or service and repair, I kinda used what they had, and then, of course, we said that we weren't gonna have, um, like, bolts or marine craft dealer, and then we took that out, obviously. So that was, that was actually pretty, pretty straightforward, I didn't do a lot of combining there.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and then in, I don't know, some of their categories are weird. Then the next category is heavy consumer goods, sales or service, and, and the definition was heavy or durable goods, sales or service. Well, durable goods, I don't wanna assault anybody's intelligence, but durable goods are something that you have, you know, like, maybe by furniture, that's a durable good, you expect to have that for a while.
Why are magazines under it, though?
What? Hang on a second, maybe my brain went to sleep.
So you books magazines, paper goods, school, and office supplies?
Cause it's in the wrong place, hold on a second. How did I, hold on, I don't even know how I did that.
Probably should just go into retail sales and service.
I should probably figure out how it got there. Oh, because it's durable goods. It was listed in the old table. Let me find it. Oh, you know what, that's not true, I just created a new category, because computer software, camera, stuff like that, that's not a heavy consumer goods, it was a little weird how they did it. I guess you could, if you wanted to, just put the whole category as durable consumer goods, sales or service, and take the heavy out of there, I mean, it doesn't really.
Yeah, I think so.
They're all durable goods.
Right. That would make sense to me.
Makes sense to me, yeah. Alright, so we did that. So now I can delete that. Okay, Al, you doing okay?
Yeah.
I'm watching, decided to quit after, you know.
Al, you can come over here.
I think I'm following the table. I've got the old, I've got the one off the website, so I'm probably not seeing what you're using, yeah.
Okay.
I'm not su- sure what I'm seeing either. It's okay.
I left my copy on my table.
Okay. Um, and again, those things are gonna be allowed in the village business district and, and a lot of the stuff, probably, um, we would never have, I don't think. But, let's go to the next section, which is non-durable consumer goods. So I combined a few things, um.
Sure, that would make sense.
Yeah, I mean grocery store, supermarket or bakery, that's fine, convenience store, specialty food store, fruit and vegetable store. Does somebody have a fruit, like a fruit and vegetable stand? I guess that would be, I guess. Okay, uh, beer, wine or liquor store.
Well, wasn't the lady, uh, that they just advertised, it was in the paper, uh, she's up in Seven Lakes now, didn't she used to be down?
Yeah, she went to a building.
Right, she used to be by the post office, but prior to that, she used to be down here on Hoffman Road.
Oh, really? I didn't know that.
That's what it said in the article.
Oh, interesting, okay. Alright, so then I guess a fruit or vegetable store does make sense.
Yeah.
Okay, then the next category they had in the old table, and we don't, I mean, we can move off of this if we need to, um, was. What did I call it? Called something? Um, health and personal care goods, pharmacy, drugstore, I mean, you can just read them there.
And this all goes in the business district?
It's all in the business district. Yeah, I mean, that's all.
I, I think that's, I think it's fine.
Other consumer goods, um. I added thrift consignment or pawn shop. I mean, why would we not want a thrift shop or a consignment shop?
You want a Dollar General?
I don't care. Well, no, 'cause now, now they're dollar, now, now they're a dollar twenty-five.
Right. They're mine.
Well, no, but Dollar twenty-five general, I don't know. But florist, obviously, art dealer supplies, and then I put miscellaneous retail establishments. 'Cause one of the things that bugs me about that old table, you can't possibly list every potential retail store.
That's exactly right.
Can you?
No.
I don't think so. I mean.
No.
So I, I think, um.
What if someone comes in and they wanna, they wanna install swimming pools? And then they're selling, uh, they're selling product to support the swimming pool industry.
You can't possibly list everything. You just can't.
That's my point.
Yeah, so I don't know. I'm gonna think, if there's a better way to do that, um, we'll figure it out. You don't wanna leave it like wide open.
Mm-hmm.
But they're just, the way they did that is just weird. Once I, once I tripped over the tourist court thing, I thought, yeah, these codes haven't been looked at for a while. I also took pet or pet supply store. They had it done at the end under animal services. I'm like, well, that's dense. I mean, it's a retail store, so I just popped it up there, okay? Um, then we moved on to finance and insurance uses and, and I kinda combined a couple of things.
The only issue I have with this is miscellaneous financial services. That's actually being done in people's homes. They're doing taxes and things of that nature.
Well, but that's considered a home business, so they're okay anyway.
Okay.
But if somebody came in, and I can't think of, I don't know, maybe you can think of an example, but like, what if someone had wanted to have a payday loan store, right? That's a.
What?
You know, pay, where you go and you get your check early and you pay a lot of interest.
Really?
Haven't you paid, come on, don't you guys know what a payday loan store is? There you go.
Oh, okay.
I never used one, but I, oh yeah, that would be like a miscellaneous financial service to me.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't know, that may not fly. Okay, alright, and those are all gonna be VVD. Okay, then it had the next category. Where am I?
Real estate, another bank.
Where are the? Uh, real estate and rental and leasing, okay? Pretty straightforward. Real estate services. Did I add anything in there?
Well, that's not only VVD.
Why?
That can also be done out of your home.
Well, are you.
Look at Becky.
Yeah.
Why do you have automobiles there?
Rental. Like an automobile rental.
I thought that rental was related to the real estate, no?
Well, it says real estate, rental and leasing. It is, if you can think of a better way to put it, um, but it's, and I don't know why. Well, I guess because real estate is property and they're talking about leasing property, but they're also talking about rental and leasing stuff.
Okay, I was taking it as.
You realize, and you turned this over to, uh, the council. You better be here for this, because it's gonna be.
Well, here's what's gonna happen. I've already talked to them about it. I'm gonna talk to them two-on-two before they ever get to a work session with it, so they understand the format.
Oh, yeah?
Yeah, otherwise, otherwise, we'd be, we'd be another six months in the process.
Or longer.
Yeah, well, 'cause it's just complicated, so.
Yeah.
Um, under real estate, comma, and rental and leasing, I don't think I changed anything. They talked about real estate services, property management services, commercial property related, mini or self-storage, rental housing related, rental or leasing of tangible goods, automobiles, recreational goods rental, like bicycles, stuff like that, consumer goods rental, consumer goods rental and intellectual property rental.
Yeah, what is that?
I don't know. I don't know what that is.
Just take it out if we don't know what it is.
Oh, establishments that assign patents, trademarks, brand names and franchise agreements.
Yeah, forget it.
But you don't think we're smart enough to do that, Tom? Is that your point?
Yeah.
I just.
I don't think it's gonna be done here.
Well, I don't mind taking that out, actually.
Well, I mean, do you think a bank is gonna come in here?
I don't know. I don't know.
Well, that's, I mean, those, all of those things seem like.
Bank wants to come in, believe me, we'll make room for him.
Okay.
Okay.
Um. Uh, can you think of any miscellaneous rental kinds of things?
Nope. Where are, where are you?
Well, actually.
Real estate and national services? No, real estate, rental and leasing.
You know, they, they rent, uh, they rent out, um, uh, power equipment.
Um.
But you'd probably rent that from a hardware store.
Well, is that rental or leasing of tangible goods? Probably, yeah. I mean, I have no problem taking intellectual property rental out. I mean, I don't think it's a big. But what I'm wondering is, do we need a miscellaneous category? That's what I'm kinda trying to ask.
My light opens up too many.
Yeah, too many things. They, but intellectual property rental could happen, uh, from a place like, um, home occupation service, right?
Well.
You don't really need an official office to do that.
Well, there are a lot of things today you don't need an official office for, yeah. I just don't.
I think you could take it out.
Yeah, me too.
Otherwise, it's confusing.
Go on.
Simple is good.
I think this thing is still used. Okay, professional and business services, um. You know, when you really go into that old table and you start reading it, you go. But some of it just doesn't make sense, but under professional services, um, professional services, okay, well, that should be pretty obvious.
Right.
Professional services, legal, accounting, tax, bookkeeping, architectural, engineering and surveying, graphic, industrial, interior design, consulting, and I just kinda combined that. Management, environmental and technical, yeah.
I have a question. Alright, if you have a category for professional services all by itself.
That doesn't make sense, does it?
Doesn't make sense, because legal is a professional service.
See, that's what I thought.
Accounting, tax, it's a professional service.
I just got rid of it. Let me just cut that and paste it. And they put veterinary under professional service. I thought that was weird.
Well, it is a professional service, but it seems weird and.
It is, yeah. It doesn't seem well-placed, but, um, I don't know where else to put it. And you gotta have.
Do we have medical in here?
Yeah, but I ain't get that far, I don't think. We can, I, I'll look at that one again. Okay, and then it, the next category, did I delete anything in there?
Under administrative.
Mary, can I ask you something?
On what, fire away.
Since you have to be, uh. Uh, on that business and professional service, just to be, this is just me, my, uh, old habits here. If you're gonna put account, accounting, tax, bookkeeping services, then I would put services in all of it or delete the services.
Yeah, I would too. I'll just delete it. I think I'm gonna delete it, 'cause on the side, it says professional and business services, right? I think that's a good point.
How about escort services?
I think we downed that, didn't we? I know you and Joe really tried, but we said no, no cabaret, no adult.
Where would you like to be escorted, Tom?
Out the door? Okay. Okay, so administrative services, um. And actually, let me ask you a question. Office services, facility services, employment agency, da-da-da, aren't those all business and professional services? Aren't they all, I mean, a collection agency, isn't that a business service for the person? So what do we need administrative services for?
Okay, but.
You know what? I don't have a problem with administrative services and the things that are listed, so.
Okay.
Um, I think it, uh.
The only thing is, I would do the same thing that I just mentioned in the other one.
Oh, gotcha, yeah.
Would you put the services or don't put it, because you have appointment agency?
Yeah, 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 services are going bye-bye.
Right.
Okay, there's saved this before. Man, I was working on this this afternoon and I went to go back to find it. I closed it out and I went to go back to find it and I couldn't find it. And I just.
It panicked.
I just, no. Okay, so administrative services, um.
So you're just gonna have administrative and take the word services out?
Yeah, take that out.
And when you get to food services, you'll do the same thing, take services out?
Yeah, hang on a second.
Uh, you don't really have them there except for the mobile food service, that's it. I mean, you do have, you need to have service, for full service, otherwise, full restaurant. That's the rule.
No, I was talking about the, under the category.
Yeah.
You can just have food.
No, I think that, no, 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 the, uh, the category, she's leaving it. She's taking it out on the second row.
Yeah, but go back to administrative services for a second. Under building and dwelling, in the old one, they listed stuff like extermination and pest control, janitorial, landscaping, car, I mean, to me, that, we don't, I don't think we need to flush it out that much.
No, but I could, I would put EG, just couples, so that it's.
Oh, you mean as an example?
To qualify as an example?
I wouldn't, because I think building and dwelling service is pretty straightforward. If you need a janitorial service to come in. I mean, because when you start listing stuff, then people are gonna think.
Okay, that's fine.
'Cause remember what we said was, if it's not listed, it's not allowed. So, I think we're just, the cleaner we make it, I think the better.
I just, I just think that if at first class, if I look at building, there, even if it is.
West End Electric down here would fall under that category.
Kind of like, what do you mean by building services? Administrative services for the.
Yeah, like janitorial, carpet cleaning, I would think that's all administrative.
Mary, West End Electric, uh, they would fall under that category.
They would?
Sure, well, they're electricians, plumbers.
Yeah, I get, yeah, okay.
Right? Building and dwelling services.
Alright, and to answer your thing on what food services, I think that you need the word service for full, because full restaurant doesn't.
You mean like full restaurant, like you had dinner tonight?
Or limited service.
Like we have over at the club.
Okay, I think, okay, I think full-service restaurant needs to stay there.
Yes, it needs to.
Okay, cafeteria or limited service restaurant, drive-through, um, snack or specialty bar, bar or drinking place, mobile food service. I put, comma, food truck. I mean, that's really what it is, right?
Yep.
Um, caterer and food service contractor and vending machine operator. Now, a couple of questions on that, though. We allowed a full-service restaurant, a cafeteria or limited service restaurant, a a snack or non-alcoholic bar, bar or drinking place, mobile food service, and a caterer in the recreational district. We did not allow a drive-through restaurant, um, we did not allow a food service contractor, nor did we allow a vending machine operator. And I'm thinking we're still good with that?
Yep.
All those food service things are available in the village business district, okay? And then we also made the full-service restaurant, the limited service restaurant, the drive-thrus, the snack bars, the bar or drinking place, the caterer, uh, available in a PUD. And I think we're probably still good with that.
Yeah.
Okay, alright.
Why would caterer be in the PUD?
Well, because if you read the definition, it provides single-event-based food services, including banquet halls. So it depends. Well, I mean, yeah, I would think you would want that in it, in something, because obviously, you're gonna, or, or, okay. And this is, this might be a discussion we have to have at another meeting, but we gotta go through and decide what applies to conditional zoning. That would be a good one for conditional zoning.
Okay.
Because, remember, conditional zoning, the village literally can set the parameters and the conditions. And that probably would be a good thing to do.
I have a question on the caterer.
Yep.
Is that, can that be a home occupation? If I'm doing the stuff in my kitchen?
Well, if your kitchen is industrial, remember, the, our, our, um, definition of home-based business is it has to be completely contained within the house, within the home. And it can't have more than one employee, I think, okay?
Okay.
So, I mean, if you were someone who did small events, heck, yeah, I mean, you have to have a certified kitchen and stuff, but.
Well.
Yeah.
Well, you've been here a year, you haven't fed us anything, so what are you talking about?
So it's not you. It's not you, Teresa.
Well, let me tell you, when I was a teacher.
I don't care about, I don't care about past history.
I made them bananas for my, for the kids, for every single one of them. So every year, we'd come up with over two hundred bananas.
That's, I like bananas. Okay, let's go to the next category here. And I've got it as, um, personal services. I combined a couple of things, um. I also had diet and weight reducing, and I put diet, nutrition and exercise. If somebody here had a personal training studio.
Sure.
No one, I don't think anyone would object to that, um, tanning salon, massage therapist, uh, tattoo parlor. They also had adult services and we kinda nixed to that the first time, um, and then we're, there's gonna be some pushback from the council on the dry cleaning and laundry services, the laundromat and the linen and uniform supply.
Because of chemicals.
Well, because the chemicals and because of water.
Yeah, absolutely.
So, I mean, it doesn't.
I think we oughta leave them out.
What about a laundromat?
You're still, you're still putting water into your, your system.
Yeah.
I mean, we, we have to protect our aquifer.
Well, would you make it a conditional zoning use? Or we just think it's really not something that we can do?
What, what, why would it make a difference if you had it as a conditional?
Well, because then if there were conditions you needed to set on, um, on, on how it was done and they could meet the conditions, then potentially, maybe somebody could do it. Potentially, that'd be a lot.
I mean, like, uh, these car washes that actually take the water and.
Recycle it.
Recycle it.
Aren't they condition, I mean, aren't they restrictions to it, no matter where, no matter what, like?
Not necessarily, no.
You can just take the water anywhere?
Well, yeah, but most of these places that have it, they also have sewer systems, okay? And they're, they have reservoirs.
Okay.
We don't.
Right, that's a, yeah, okay. Well, you know what? Um, that would make me think that probably those things should come out.
I think so. Teresa, what do you think?
I don't, I, I'm okay with the dry cleaning and laundry services.
Well, the problem with dry cleaning is they use chemicals.
Okay, but I don't know about the laundromat, because.
Well, you just, okay, go ahead.
No, I understand, but I'm saying, uh, I'm just trying to figure out how you could do it with conditions.
Well, I'm not so sure. I, I, maybe the whole category, dry cleaning and laundry services, laundromat, linen and uniform supply, those are all, those are all gonna be huge users of water.
Yes, and chemicals. Yes, and chemicals.
Well, laundromat, not so much on the chemicals, right? I mean, you're doing.
Well, they're gonna be using soaps, bleaches.
Right. Perfume, fabric softener.
Sure.
Well, if you, if you don't think we need one, that's fine.
Well, it's not, it's not, it's not about whether we need one, it's about whether we could, with our, with the water situation the way it is, whether that's something that we benefit.
Can you put it in, in just a conditional? No, because.
You could, you could put it just in conditional zoning.
Well, yeah, but you can also, I mean, if someone wants to, really wants to put one in, they can always apply for a change.
What do you mean?
Can't they?
What do you mean?
Well, say, say I want, you didn't approve a laundromat here, and I wanted to put in a laundromat. I could go to council and ask for.
Well, you'd have, first it would have to be come an allowable use.
Right.
Just like.
But you'd have to file, you'd have to file an application to do that.
You'd have to come through us first.
Right.
Right, and then we're gonna go to a public hearing.
Right.
What I'm thinking, I don't, I mean, the conditional, the conditional zoning thing allows the village to set the parameters, to set, to set the conditions under which that could be done.
Okay, well, that's what I'm saying.
Well, okay, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna go, I'm gonna step back on what I was saying, because if, for instance, you wanted to put a retirement community, along Foxfire Road.
Right.
They are going to need to have laundry facilities.
Correct, but one of the conditions of that is gonna be that they provide a well.
Right, there you go.
I mean, that's, that's, yeah, and, and for a person who just, that's actually a really good point. For a person who just wants to put in a laundromat, you're not gonna say to them, sure, you can do that, as long as you dig a well. You're not, you're not gonna do that.
Right.
Okay, so that said, I'm kinda thinking maybe we need to take them out.
I would.
Teresa?
I would put it in a conditional. Or PUD, whatever, like this.
Well, you know what, let's do this, let's, where's the conditional thing? Let's do this, let's, let's put, let's put it in there as conditional, all right? And then the village council can do that one out. I'm not trying to avoid our obligation here, but I don't know that that's, and I, and I don't, I wouldn't wanna have to set the conditions of that either. Because you gotta be a council. Okay, miscellaneous personal care services, I couldn't really think of anything off the top of my head, but I'm sure there are some. Can you think of any?
No.
No, but you do have under animal services, services grooming and training.
Right.
Why isn't it animal services, why isn't it human services as well?
That's actually pretty funny.
Okay.
All right.
I've been under personal services.
It's under animal services.
Care, nail.
Yeah.
And skincare.
Yeah, grooming and training, that's actually pretty funny, Tom.
Yeah.
Okay, so, that was as far as I got. Now, if you go back to the table, the next part you're getting into, the old table, is, and I'm not quite sure how they classified these, but we have some allowable uses in the village business district for sightseeing, okay, which would be someone who literally, you know, put together a sightseeing thing, whatever. Taxi or limo service, towing and other road and ground services, national post office. And, you know, I don't know, this is one I think that needs to go bye-bye. Publishers newspapers, magazines, books, database, greeting cards, calendars, maps, and similar works. Well, I don't think we're gonna publish newspaper, that's not a very profitable business. I don't know that that's something that actually is worth having in there.
Well, you, you, first of all, the paper industry is a big contaminating industry.
Oh, yeah, you're right.
Okay, you're not gonna want a publisher. They use a lot of, they use a lot of chemicals.
They use a ton of chemicals.
Yes, they.
That's really smart, Thomas. You don't have to go to personal grooming and training class.
Maybe later.
Okay, a software publisher, I think that would certainly.
Software would be fine.
Okay, okay, the next category, and I'll get these all done, but theater, dance, or music establishment.
That would be fine.
And a lot of those things, the sports team and the club. Whoa, 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 whoa. Sports team and club, professional or semi-professional sports teams, or clubs participating in live sporting. That is approved in the recreational district and, and in the village business district.
I don't even know why we have it.
I don't either. Okay, like, I'm thinking, probably those need to be nixed.
I would be okay with that.
A professional or semi-professional sports team, or clubs participating in live sporting. To me, that means then you build a stadium, and then there's someplace to play, right?
Okay, so is, is, could this be related to golf in any way?
Boy, when I read that, that's not.
I don't think so.
Yeah, I, I'm thinking more like, you know, a farm team, farm baseball team or something.
Soccer.
Yeah.
Basketball.
Yeah, I'm gonna change that one.
The stadium for, for golf would actually be the golf course. And we already had those.
Okay. Okay, then we have a promoter of sports, that we allowed in the village business district. They're organizing, promoting, and managing the perform, and managing.
Yeah, they, they actually do that on their own.
Um, agent for management services, agents representing artists, athletes, and entertainers. This is, stuff is just weird to me.
Yeah.
Well, it's, it's weird that you would have an office for that, because then, you know, that, that seems to be applicable if you're in a large city.
Yeah.
But not in a small town.
And then it has independent artist, writer, or performer. Independent individuals engaged in art productions. I, I just, where did they get this from?
Yeah, but that, if you're independent, you can work on your own.
Well, that's what, that's what I would think. I just, some of these categories, on the second look through, I'm kinda going, huh? So. Okay, a promoter of sports, performing arts, and similar events, we're okay with. The sports team that goes along with it, just nixed. An agent for management services.
Aren't, aren't those like, maybe like a home occupation, why is it?
Why is it in here, yeah, why is it in our thing, I don't know. I don't.
I mean, because this, this put up, imply that it has a, an office. An actual big time thing.
Okay, hold on a second. Hold on, hold on, hold on, so.
No, and I, and the same thing goes with the museum of other special places.
Yeah, the museum we didn't have, so. Okay, if you look at those things, the agent, from the promoter, the agent, the independent writer, those to me would be miscellaneous professional services.
Yes.
So, I, I wonder if maybe we need to put that category back in there. Because a person who is an agent for somebody, that's a professional service, is it not?
That's correct.
Yeah, so I think if we just go ahead and put in the dreaded miscellaneous.
Professional service?
Yeah, I just, because.
Makes sense.
And then we can take all that stuff out.
Yep.
All right. And we can also make those to, to, to conditions. You can make those a conditional zoning, so if somebody has to come in and they wanna do something that's not on the list, then they gotta just do that, but they'll have to come through as a, as a conditional zoning, okay? That makes me feel better when we get those out of there. All right. Okay, we, we weren't big on the museum and the zoo.
No.
Okay? I guess we said we, well, I think when we talked about it, we said we would allow a museum in village business district. If somebody wanted to open a small building that was like the history of Foxfire, we wouldn't object to that. You know, that, I mean, not that we've really been along, long enough to be a museum, but no one would object to that. Okay, now, let's talk about, we're into games, arcade establishments, we allowed in recreational district and village business district. A golf estab, miniature golf establishment, a golf course, a public course, and a private course are all allowed in recreational district, and those all need to be subject to conditional zoning.
Okay, I wanna have, I wanna ask a question first.
Yes.
There was a, there was a place over in Alstead Village that had gambling machines. Okay, does this allow that?
Um, hang on a second. The games arcade establishment operates arcades and parlors except gambling, billiard, or pool. So the answer to that question is no.
Okay.
Well, there, from what I understand, at the corner where First Teeter is, that they're gonna build a miniature golf.
Where?
Where?
Look close to where you're talking about.
It's behind Here's Teeter, like if you look.
They're gonna put a miniature golf in.
I don't know what's going there, but it's all tore up right there.
Oh, yeah, I saw that, yeah, on the road that goes in.
I've heard that might be going in there, but I haven't been able to.
Interesting.
So, if they did that, would they have?
No, they, they wouldn't have gambling. No, I was concerned about gambling, that's all. Because I, I believe that, that establishment originally moved out of Southern Pines or Aberdeen when they moved up to Alstead Village, and then I think they finally got shut down up there, I'm not sure.
Okay, golf course resort may include clubhouse, guest accommodations, and or residence that may be individually owned but fall within the management of the resort. We allowed that in recreational district, and we also have that allowed in a PUD, okay? Fitness, recreational sports gym, athletic club, multipurpose facility. The definition here says includes archery and shooting ranges, which, ah.
We don't, we don't allow that in the, well, we don't allow shooting ranges within the business district, I don't know about archery.
Well, we're currently, they're allowed in recreational district and the village business district.
Shooting?
Yeah, includes archery and shooting ranges.
No, well, that's, we don't allow shooting in Foxfire.
Well, not on a private, not at a private residence, but if you had indoor shooting range, that might be different.
Yeah.
I think that's what it's talking about.
It doesn't, though, really sound like something that enhances what we do. Not that I don't like to shoot, but. So if we leave the description off, and we just put fitness, recreational sports gym, athletic, multipurpose facility, and make it conditional zoning, then when, if that was ever done, that person has to come in and give us a very specific question. Okay, you're right, okay, so. Oh, we're almost done, you guys, hey, hey, hey. Okay, so the next category. Most of this we've been through. It, I gotta figure out a different title for it, though, because it's got nursery preschool, fire and rescue, police, emergency response, clinic and health bus, that's all in one category, which is kinda odd to me. Okay, one thing I wanna ask you about.
The, the one thing that's confusing to me is that the other, the other things that we're doing has a use category, like residential.
And this doesn't seem to have one, and I'm gonna create one. I think I'm gonna create one.
All right.
Go down, though, one of the things that concerns me is, it says small institutions, up to two hundred and fifty seats in larger seating area. What is that? And then it says other institutions, more than two hundred and fifty seats in largest seating area. What is that?
A kind of a zone or something.
Church?
Churches.
Oh.
Okay, and that also could be subject to conditional zoning, I think. All right, okay. Okay, then, the next category was building, development, and general contracting, which I think makes sense. Machine-related, and then it lists like carpet floor tile contractor, concrete, electrical. And again, I think we almost need to have a category that says miscellaneous something or other. I, I just don't, I just don't, I don't think you can, yeah, I don't think you can either, okay?
Okay, so basically this is, we're talking about some kind of a heading, and these things are gonna.
Yeah, exactly, yeah, just, just the way that, that the categories we went through on the table that resembles Aberdeen is, okay? I just didn't get through all of them. Okay, and then, the crop production part, I think is pretty straightforward. I think what we're gonna need to do, though, where it says domestic backyard chickens, I think we need to take the word backyard out, don't we, Teresa?
No, please.
Teresa wants to have chickens.
Okay, but everybody has to understand the story.
Nah.
I moved from, I moved from California.
Yeah.
I never saw my house, it was under Jackson Springs.
So she thought she was in Jackson Springs.
So I looked at Jackson Springs, and they told me that I couldn't have chickens.
Yeah, loops.
And then to my surprise, I wasn't in Jackson Springs, I was in Foxfire Village.
And you can't have chickens.
And then I told you, I have a larger lot than my neighbors.
Yeah.
And I, nobody would see my chickens. I just want eight chickens, I can go and get my eggs.
Yeah, I, I know you do. Okay, and then.
Chicken run about in Foxfire?
No.
You said, there you go, I bet you if I asked people, they would like, what?
Okay.
How did that come about that you didn't know about? That's what.
We put that in there because of you were coming.
Well, they're allowed in RA, RA five, RE, RF two hundred.
Well, but, okay, even if now, now because of the changes, if I wanted to go and buy an acre in, you know, in the, in that section, I can't buy an acre, I have to buy a five.
Yes, you could. No, 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 you could get someone to sell you, because there are a lot of grandfather lots, you could get someone to sell you an acre.
Because that's what I kind of, maybe I could do that.
The one other thing, under the, the quote farm category, so to speak, is we talked a lot about forestry and logging. Currently, it would be allowable in RA and RA five, and we have asked to have it be allowable in rural estate, recreational district, RF two hundred, equestrian, and village business district. The forestry thing is, is also a good way to preserve open space.
Yeah, why would it be in the village business district?
Um, if you had somebody that had, you know, like, like, across the street, there's BBD, right?
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm thinking of the lots that we have in the village bus, business district, and those trees are not harvestable.
Well, that's true. That's true. How did we get talked into doing that, Joe must have been here. I don't think.
I mean, you can leave it there, it doesn't make any difference, but.
I would rather leave it, only because if somebody, for some reason, let's say they do this, let somebody, let's say, where am I? This is where I am. Let's say somebody buys Sacramento's property, the hundred and fifteen acres on Foxfire Road, and they wanna make it all village business district. And we go, sure, you can do that. And then they say, you know what, I'd like to put that into forestry. We're gonna go, sure, you can do that, right? Who wouldn't stand in their way?
Yeah, sure, no.
Donnie Lee has, I think he wants to put the big piece of rural estate that he bought from Robert Edwards into forestry. Dave and Agent Hugh wanna put their RS twenty property, they'll ask to rezone it, and then they'll put their RS twenty property by you into forestry, which would be awesome.
Save.
Okay? Okay, so that would take us through the whole table. I, here's what I'd like to ask you, we need to get this sucker done, and so if I can kick it out by maybe next Tuesday. by maybe next Tuesday, are you guys up for doing a couple special meetings just so we can get it done?
But Mary, today was supposed to be my last day, but yes, for you, I'll do it.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
He just needs, she needs a vote, and if you're gone, then nobody can vote on anything.
Well, I just, but if, if we, um.
There's only, there's only gonna.
Let me know what day you're thinking about.
Yeah, I will, I, I gotta get it done first, okay? And then, the next time we go through it too, we've got to decide where we think conditional zoning is applicable and where it's not. Say, for example, I don't personally think that, well, I shouldn't say that, because what does it say on the old one? Like, if you look at residential, I don't know that I see us doing, I guess maybe we could, conditional, I don't know, single family detached houses in a PUD. But I guess we could. But conditional zoning gives us another option there too. So, like, where am I? Over there, where Windy Ridge is going in, um, we could have, had we had a conditional zoning district, made that a conditional zoning. Okay? So, that said, I think we're done now.
Have they slowed down?
So, we're not doing conditional, the other thing today?
Not tonight, not at all, cause we're already at quarter seven. And just by I, um, I have, I heard from Lee Humphrey, who came one night, he works with, he's working with Windy Ridge.
No.
They expect to pay him by the end of the week.
Oh, really?
Okay? Now, I have not heard back on the bond or the final CCRs, and he's not in control of that, so I sent out another email today saying, hey.
Is Lisa back?
Yeah, she's back, yeah, she's back, yeah.
Would you ask her to make me come back?
Yeah, you, Al, do you want a hard copy of this, the UVO?
It's hard to look at it on all.
It is, like, yeah, it's hard to look the table.
Yeah.
Well, not the table.
The, the table's extra.
Oh, okay. I'm, is, you're talking about section twenty one?
Yeah, I'm talking about chapter twenty one, do you want a hard copy?
I, I, if nobody wants, wants, I'll take them, I, I.
Well, no, this is one, no one can have this, but I, I.
They're making a copy for me, because I, I'm complaining about.
Well, no, Teresa, you know, when you said that the other day, that you grew up with paper, that makes little sense to me, that is not complaining, that is not complaining.
I like the old way of doing it with paper and rip, rip pen.
Well, it's not, I mean, I can flip back and forth whatever I want, I can mark it if I need to, or.
Okay.
I don't wanna kill a tree, but if you don't mind.
No, we, that's no problem.
Yeah, that's all I get.
Okay, any other new business?
None.
Emotional, oh, wait a minute, let me get over here.
I make a motion to adjourn.
Okay.
Teresa's second motion.
Can we have a question?
Yeah, you can have a question.
So, did you cover, um, equestrian boarding facilities? Was that covered in all that?
You're fine, yeah, that's fine, that's, it, we didn't, I haven't done the new part of the table that way, but that's all good, there's nothing, we're not changing anything there.
Okay.
You're fine, no, no, no.
Oh, not me, but I just, if somebody came in and had like, uh, uh, McClendon Hills boarding station.
Well, what that, what would that, that would end up being like a conditional zoning, cause I thought about the same thing.
But that would be an ETJ.
Well, not necessarily, Sakman's property, gotta get so, this way, that hundred and fifteen acres is all zoned equestrian. So, if someone came in and they wanted to do a McClendon Hills kind of thing.
Right.
Then that would be either a pod or conditional zoning, yeah, yep. No, you're good.
Any other questions?
Well, the only thing is that, uh, with the table, I, this is, I, I would strongly recommend that there's some, this, this is the Aberdeen, that we have some kind of a one page or two pages explanation. New state construction general, this is committed, uh, will it put as an S or a no or a A?
Why don't you give that copy to Mary?
Yeah, sure, no problem.
How's that, Mary?
And this is where I got the things, but our, our codes are no, not as straightforward as theirs are.
That's a good idea.
All right, just look at it, because I really like that.
Yeah.
I think it's very, it makes it very easy, it makes it easier to look at the table, and I understand.
Okay. Okay, anything else, we're done, right?
Yep.
Alright, guys, thank you so much.